I can lead the discussion today.
All right, since we don't have it on the agenda, we'll dispense with the normal formalities and move right to the first item on the agenda, which is the discussion of the BCT lease. Do we have a presentation from staff first?
Yes, we do. We didn't know specifically what the board wanted to talk about, so we thought that we would start with a general overview and then we would get into any specific questions that might have at some point. So Carolyn is warming up the projector. And the BCT lease is a lease that was entered, it's a capitalized lease, that was entered into over ten years ago, and it is agreement between BCT, I should explain for the record, is Beaver Creek Telecharge Company. And what it is, it's a parcel of land that was once owned by Claremont, and it was where the administrative...
That's what I was trying to figure out.
It was where...
It's in PowerPoint, so I don't know.
It's where Claremont's administrative offices were, and it is also where our two storage tanks are located. So if you were to look at the parcel up here on the stream, that we're really talking about this entire parcel, and what you see here is then is the old Claremont administrative And then you see our two storage tanks that sit here. Okay, did I get the right parcel?
No. Claremont's on the right.
Okay, so this is the Claremont parcel here. At issue has been this building, let me, I've got a lot of things going on.
Still trying to break it, that didn't work.
Upside down as you face it from the street.
The street that Commissioner Holloway is referencing, that's the main thoroughfare.
Henry C.
Yeah, Henry C. Runs along here. And the access to the site, the primary access to the site is through here. And then that gets you into, there's parking area in this area here, and then there's BCT service parking for their vehicles and employee parking is here and down along the This area, this open area in the back here, most of that is taken up by drain field, and I did ask Adam, who's one of our engineering managers, to come in because we made some improvements out there over the past, last year, last fiscal year, by putting in this utility line that runs down through here. In the process, we had to tear up the parking area that was in here, and therefore we had to return it to its original condition. There, there's also additional easements in where you see the dark shaded area and over on this side of the site as well. The...
A quick question, what kind of easement? Are you talking about roadway easement or...
These are utility easements.
Ah, easements?
Yeah, pipes. We have, we do have subterranean pipes in this area.
What it looked like, just want to be sure.
Okay. The, at issue here was this parcel here. And it is a parcel where Beaver Creek Phone Company built a newer building that you, if you know where the site is, where they went out and built that. And the concern is that the, this particular structure was built on land that CRW believes was not part of the sale, in this lease sale arrangement that was going on. Both parties acknowledge, and Dean will talk about this in more detail, that the sales agreement that was, that we're referencing here, or the lease sale agreement, I guess is a better way to describe it, was not very well drafted. There's some ambiguity in the agreement, and that ambiguity has to do with what is the site that Beaver Creek Phone Company has been paying lease payments to CRW on for the last ten years plus. They believe that it includes everything, and we believe that it only included, or at least the position has been, that it only included this area where the old Claremont administration building is. This parcel and this discussion has been going on, I think, since the prior board as a result of taking, so at least five years. So we essentially have a lease purchase agreement that was entered into over ten years ago. There was renewed interest in discussion about what was actually intended by the parties, and that began when the prior board arrived over five years ago. We have, and CRW spent a lot of time, when the prior board came on board, essentially closing the administrative offices, sending employees home, and doing a review of the records related to this particular lease purchase sale. Yes?
Quick question. So the shutdown was because of this?
Well, there were some, it was about this. I think that there was some concern that some existing employees who reside at CRW may have had a conflict as it relates to this particular sale, and therefore we wanted to make sure, as, this is from my reading of the records, that the building was clear so that the people who were coming in, the attorneys who were coming in to do the review, had unfettered access to the records. That's my best recollection of what I read in the discussion.
Thank you. I want to add just a little bit of information. That review was performed by Davis Wright Tremaine. Dean Phillips was with Davis Wright Tremaine at that point in time. And the recommendation about closing the building came to the board from our local council, and the building was then shut down. The only person, was only CRW person who was allowed in the building, was the acting general manager. Obviously, somebody had to look at the legal fees.
Well, speaking for myself, I'm not overly concerned about that aspect of things. Mostly, from my perspective, I, you know, a problem occurred ten years ago. We're ten years past that, the beginning of that problem. We're at the point now where we need to find a solution. In my understanding, we have a potential agreement that will solve today's problem.
That's correct.
Okay. Unless there's more questions about history, I would be happy to move into how do we solve the problem.
The board, this is...
Pat?
I would add just a bit more information. I've studied this in depth, as has former Commissioner Kemper. And the, the original section that I believe was leased is here. Over time, BCT built the Keller Building here. They also built all of this parking area. So I was a little surprised just now when I heard the general manager say that when we put our line in, that...
Mine never turned on.
That, I was surprised to hear him say we had to pay for repaving that parking lot because the parking lot was placed in an area that, so far as we know, was not leased to BCT. So I'm kind of curious about what that cost. You've always spent a lot of money. I'd like to be able to add a lot of uncertainty.
Again, is that part, is that part of a problem that needs a solution, or is the basic issue here, the completion of the lease and the protection of our assets?
Yes, the lease terminates in 2017, where they will have made, from their point of view, all the required payments. And what we're trying to do, at least in the discussions that I've had with them, is to protect our asset, which, primary asset, which is those water tanks, and have unfettered access to the utility easements. What we've done here, we've had our engineering department draw up these hash lines around the site, which is the area that we would like to secure. And BCT has indicated that they don't have a problem with clear titling that property as long as we clear title the rest of the property.
With that, and that includes legal access to all aspects of our facilities?
Yes.
Without any qualification?
Yes.
Is that in form of a written easement, or is that just a general agreement?
Well, that's as far as we've gotten, with the understanding that if the board is receptive to that, then we would turn the lawyers loose and have them, you know, compotize that into a different document.
So what you need then is approval by the board to go follow through on these?
What did, one qualification. When we last brought this to the board, there was some concern that maybe we were leaving some money on the table. And the board asked me to go back and raise with BCT the possibility of them paying additional monies. But at the same time, the board also made public all of the supporting or confidential documents. The difficulty that that caused, and this is in my opinion, Mr. Phillips couldn't speak otherwise, is that with the information that we had received from the attorneys, because we've also had a second legal review that we paid for, that they had told us that there was about a 50-50 chance of us prevailing. I think with the release of those documents, it's about 70-30. So I don't know if any monies would be on the table now, given that they have made a public records request for those records. And they have those.
So that means we have to go to trial. There'd be some litigation involved in this, if we, if we are to the point?
If we're to the point where we can't reach agreement and the board still wishes to pursue this, we have been advised, and BCT has been advised by their council, that we were both likely to spend a quarter million to $300,000.
Is that per agency?
Per agency.
Where's that coming from?
Well, in our case, it would come from the rate payer.
Well, it seems to be the rate payers are the same people, since a whole heck of a lot of people that are with us are also with BCT. So they'd be getting hit for anywhere from a half a million to $600,000 or more in legal fees on a legal issue that has maybe a 50% chance of prevailing. And/or we'd end up with a judge that would play Solomon, and probably end up with essentially the agreement that seems to be at least tentatively in place now. Not legally codified, obviously, but, because no contracts have been signed, but it strikes me, if we're going to solve the problem, instead of getting into the history of how we got there, because we can't go back ten years, then to solve today's problem is to come up with an agreement in which they pay their rent until 2015, they take title to their property, we get title to our tanks, our pipes, and all access that we need guaranteed. I would assume that would be recorded easements. Would that be correct, Dean?
Actually, yeah, let me jump in here for just a minute. I think the concept of the proposed settlement agreement is, is that we would actually end up beading the underlying property to either CRW, in the case of the tanks, with access easements going for the piping on the rest of their property, so that we would actually end up with a deed to the underlying property underneath the tanks. And then we would have access easements and infrastructure easements to leave our piping in place, and have a maintenance easement to be able to maintain all of our piping and have access to them. We would also have an access easement into the tanks. And we haven't gotten to that detail yet because that actual access easement may actually be included in the deed, but that's one of the details we haven't worked out. The remainder of the property then would be deeded to BTC under the discussion that's currently on the table.
Yes.
You're talking about giving them title to the property behind the tanks, the parking areas?
That, that is correct, Commissioner. So, and that is essentially what was anticipated under their purchase agreement, is that they were entitled to purchase that entire site at the conclusion of the lease.
So that wasn't the lease initially?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they would purchase it for $1, and that's why when Mr. Moore referred to it as a capitalized lease, another way to say it is a financing lease. Essentially, what that lease is, is a financing lease for the purchase of that site, so that their lease payments over the 20-year term of the lease apply to the purchase price plus $1 at the end of the year, and then they would be entitled to a deed.
Yes, Pat?
The, as you all know, I know everybody, you know, we've spent almost $170,000 in legal fees already.
No, we've not spent any more.
And had the board been given, and actually, it's a question whether there's one or two Paul Howard settlement letters. Either one was reviewed twice, or there were two. The board has not, until, Mr. Phillips emailed, had not had sight of that settlement letter. So we really didn't have a clue. And one of the issues relative to the initial agreement, it allowed CRW to continue to maintain and, if necessary, expand our tanks there. And so it's not, I don't believe, I think I would really recommend that the board members at least have a chance to review some more material before, as a board make a decision. I don't know, since it's been, since March, apparently, since we haven't been from BCT, I simply don't know where anything is right now. And the offer, as I understood it from Phillips' letter, little letter Phillips forwarded to us, that the ground under the tanks would only belong to the water district as long as we were operating it. Now, that poses some potential complications, should we at some point merge with someone else. Or something of that sort, if that were the case, we would then, in my reading of that, lose access, we would lose the ground, because, you know, right now, we own it all.
Well, there's a couple of corrections for that. First of all, the prior board was advised of the concepts of this settlement. They may not have seen that settlement, or proposed concept letter from Mr. Howard, but the board was advised of the concept of that settlement by Mr. Moore in executive session. The second aspect of this is that with respect to the underlying ground, there is a provision, a current provision in the lease agreement that says that if the tanks or property is not operated for the use of water as a result of a merger, then it would revert back to BTC. Whether that language stays in the eventual deal is unclear yet. That's part of the concept that Mr. Howard has talked about, but we have not assented or given our consent to that being part of the proposed transaction. So the, so what I would recommend to get to the point of how we resolve this issue is, is that let the discussions continue with BTC, so we can flesh out some of the deal, find out, first of all, if they are willing to pay something additional for the placement of the Keller Building, the rent for the site of the Keller Building. And as Mr. Moore has indicated, we don't know the answer to that yet because the negotiations stalled after the March letter.
How, how quickly can you complete negotiations and come back to us with a proposed contract?
I don't know that I can answer that, because in part, that depends upon how fast BTC is willing to move.
Both of them.
But, I mean, I think we've got the concept close enough that within 30 days, we should be able to be back to the board with a...
Some concrete proposal. And that way, we can look at this concrete proposal, if there's a hole in it that needs to be filled, we can say that to you, and you can go back and try and fill the hole, or not, as the case may be.
Absolutely.
Is there a sense of the board, because obviously, we can't take a vote, but is there a sense of the board that we would direct staff to go ahead and go forward and let them get a solid proposal in front of us, as I feel that way?
I'm okay with that.
You feel that okay with you?
I would like to have negotiations talked about where we might put another tank on that property if we need to.
If, yeah, if geologically, it's even feasible, obviously, that's a question.
One thing that I heard you say was that there's a drain field back there. Can you put a tank on a drain field? I don't know that you can do that.
No, we would not be able to do that, but there may be, and that's something we'd have to have the engineers take a look at, is if there is enough room there around, outside of the drain field area, to place it.
Well, there, now, as I understand it, the way we've described this easements, those are typical utility easements, the kind that the state, the county, cities all use. So as far as being, you know, something that we could use and not fear of having some sort of a discrepancy pop up, that's pretty much out of the question, I, it seems to be, anyway.
Right.
And there's enough room in those easements to maintain and repair, should something happen or is needed up there. If we're going to build another tank up there, where are we going to get the $5 million to do that? We're having a hard time paying legal fees.
So good.
I'm advised by staff, and Adam is here, you can ask him, that the likelihood of another tank going in there is not very high, is that correct?
That's correct.
May I ask, Adam, why is that?
Basically, the Henry C. site is almost the midpoint between two pressure zones from hydraulic, since the downstream pressure zone basically feeds through this tank, these reservoirs, while there are connections off of this in the immediate vicinity. One of the main functions of the tanks is to then charge the Beaver Creek Pressure Zone, which is the uppermost of our south system. So from a capacity sense, really, we are well over capacity in the sense of need in that immediate vicinity, so we would not need additional storage in that area.
If, just for the sake of argument, let's suppose there was a massive change in the metro concept, and all of a sudden, we had leapfrogging development going on like Southern California did, which destroyed that as a place to live, and a whole bunch of houses went in that needed to be fed by our system. Is there a spot on that piece of property where another tank could go in?
The ideal spot for it, of course, would be...
Where one of the buildings?
Not necessarily. I'm just thinking from a topographical sense, really, the high point is where the tanks are now. So immediately to the, it would be the north, north is consequently down on that map. Where those bushes are and small trees to the...
For engineer.
That area there. We have had some talk about, in the future, what could happen. The UGB, the urban growth boundary, is to the south, not very far. Is the potential, again, this is all speculative, but in years to come, that the UGB moves further south up on the draw, surrounding this area. Thus, sewer, Oregon City, essentially sewer would come into that area, remove the need for a drain field at this site, and then, you know, connect the site to a municipal sewer. Again, very speculative. The drain field being what it is, large, a commercial drain field, there are remedial efforts that you can undertake to develop the soils to construct in that area. But obviously, on a underground field, it wouldn't be possible.
One last question, is there another site anywhere in the general area where you could locate a tank if you needed to? Not on that site, I mean, some other piece of property?
Not a property currently under CRW ownership. We do have some potential areas, again, to the south, higher in elevation, in the Beaver Creek Pressure Zone, where we do have possibilities for future, where it would be, again, more needed, more necessary because of pressure requirements.
Thank you.
My concern wasn't about our houses going in. My concern is that there's an proposed industrial land close there to the north, and if we, if it happens, it's located, business that uses tremendous amount of water, for some reason, we may be able to do that.
I had a question for Adam.
Was the drain field put there originally because of the tanks, or because of the Claremont admin building? Why is it there? What does it serve?
The drain field serves, originally served the original building, the one, the building to the right there.
Just for clarification, historically, we've referred to that, we're calling it today the Claremont Building, but historically, it actually is referenced as the Hoffman Building, and that was in your material. So just, just so you didn't get confused on what building we were talking about.
BCT's offices.
Right. Well, they actually have both of them.
I know. Pat?
One, I know we're trying to solve the problem, but a little bit of history would help. Within the agreement itself, the lease purchase agreement, there's a provision that says if the lease is materially violated by Beaver Creek, and that's where all this started, then we would not have to turn over ownership to them at the end. Now, I believe that everybody wants, you know, an equitable and fair agreement out of this. But that is, as Laurie says, there's industrial area nearby and so on, and I have a concern that we're going to, you know, give up land that we, in fact, at some point, need. They went ahead and built the Keller Building and all the parking out there, however it happened. And I would prefer to see us be able to keep, you know, the, if you will, let's call it the bottom portion for the moment, starting with the tanks, you know, at least then parking perpetuity, or at least until there was some kind of need for us to use it for our own business purposes. And of course, I would want to be sure that should we ever merge or go into any kind of other business relationship, we would not then lose the land and lose the tanks and the easements, because that could really mess something up big time.
I think the solution for the tanks and the easements is probably pretty well in place. The only remaining question then is, is the concept of expansion. In the area where... In the area where the bushes are, which is just south of the tanks, is it...
That's north of the tank.
North of the tank. You got me upside down. Okay, just north of the tanks.
Yeah, right in here.
Is it conceivable to carve out a piece of that and include it with our tanks for future planning?
Well, that's what I heard Chris or Sola suggesting, that we explore that.
As part of the negotiations. Because if there's just a chunk big enough to put another tank on there, in case it ever happens, like you're concerned with, then that would probably be helpful. But is there any other points that need to be made before we move on? And do we have a sense of the board as far as at least getting Dean to go forward and bring us back to some kind of an agreement that we can look at, I think?
Yeah, I would just request that all materials that have passed back and forth come to the board so that we actually know what's going on. We've had attorneys out there for a very long time with no result. And, you know, we need to finalize this, we need to finish it. And we, as the board, need to know what is going on in the process.
Will we know that when we get the final contract? The agreed upon, the agreement? We'll know everything that's been allowed and agreed to?
My concern, I'll answer. My concern is that this has all gone in on under a cloak. We didn't know what was going on, we didn't know what was going to spend, we didn't know what was doing, who was doing what. And given that history, I would think that rather than putting more money into drafting a contract, let's first get agreement on the basic facts themselves. What are we agreed upon? And then develop the contract in accordance. Because, you know, why draft something that is potentially not going to work?
That isn't what I say. But the problem I have is when the attorneys and our general manager are negotiating with their attorney and their general manager, if they're sharing everything with us, information will get leaked, and that's like playing poker with all the cards face up. It doesn't work. It's already caused us a problem because that happened once before. And that's part of why we're still sitting here today on this issue. Speaking for myself, I don't want to participate in negotiations that should be done between the professionals, but I do want to see the result of that negotiation and make sure that the specific interests that we have addressed are in fact addressed in the contract, which is to say easements, tanks, possibility of an additional tank in a particular location, without going and ending up spending as much as $600,000 or $700,000 in legal fees and dragging this out. It's been dragged out for five years. I don't think we have a place as commissioners participating in negotiations. That's not our forte or area of expertise. We pay the attorney a significant amount of money to do this, so we should let him do his job.
I think all Pat is asking for is when they come to an agreement, that we see that agreement for the final draft of the legal, the legal draft.
If that's what we're talking about, just an agreement, the agreement at the end of the ballgame before the contract is drafted, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, that, you're correct. That is what I was asking for. I would just say that the records were not made public until April the 12th, 2012. So this has gone on for five years cloaked, without being outside. So that has, in my view, absolutely nothing to do with the lack of progress over all this time.
It's in the past.
Yeah.
Well, it is.
That's way ago.
You guys are learning.
If I'm hearing everybody except Graffin who hasn't spoken correctly, then the direction is to go forward and bring us back in agreement.
We'll be happy to do that, and that's the way I'm accustomed to handling it, so I have absolutely no problem with that. The one caveat that I would make is that while we are in the negotiations and while we make that presentation, my recommendation is that this board reconvene executive sessions to discuss these negotiations so that they don't get out in the public and hamper the negotiations. We have already been faced with the situation where all of the confidential information up to this point in time has been released. BTC has it in their possession. And so my only recommendation, as we develop strategy and we are in the negotiations, we do that in executive session.
Sounds reasonable to me.
The executive session, even though we've waived it up to this point in time, the executive session and the confidentiality of the discussions and the attorney-client communication can be reinstated from this time forward by this board. Obviously, that is a privilege that this board can waive if they so choose, just as the prior board did. My recommendation is that we do it in executive session.
Sounds good to me. I agree. I tend to look at these kinds of things somewhat the same way a brainstorming thing is done. Brainstorming is done in private so that every ridiculously crazy, silly idea in the world can come out on the table, but nobody gets embarrassed in public about it. Negotiations sometimes are somewhat the same way, and that is lots of ideas are going to get floated and tossed back and forth. And what somebody's willing to stick to or not willing to stick to needs to remain private until such time as an agreement is reached. Moving on, it sounds like we don't have anything else on that issue. The next item on our agenda is the South Fork, excuse me, South Fork Water Board rates.
That is correct. Carol has a slide, let me just say, on the front end, the short version, is that we have been in negotiations with South Fork Water Board. We have tendered to them a response to their rate request. They have agreed with that rate request in concept. They, we believe that because it was part of a settlement agreement, along with the methodology of the settlement agreement that was entered into in May of 2010, that we could have accepted that. But because of the nature of that agreement and the whole issue around rates, it was my judgment that we should bring that back to the board, and I shared that with South Fork. They asked to have it settled without board review and approval, and I told them no, that we need to bring that back to the board. So Carol has put together kind of an overview of where we are and the specifics of what we are talking about agreeing to.
And I believe that copies of the settlement agreement have been given to all of you, as well as a letter from FCS Group should be in here. It's not for the next meeting, but...
Well, we're going to talk about a formally approval tomorrow, but tonight it was one of the things that the board asked for. So we'll talk about it tonight.
Is it in tomorrow's?
It might be. I couldn't put that part together. This just gives the general timeline, so there was a settlement agreement in May of 2010, and we agreed on a rate of 74 cents per CCF. We actually expected to hear from South Fork over a year ago with a new rate, and they did not come forward with that proposal. They did that this year in July of 2012. Their initial proposal was for $1.049, so pretty significant increase. We utilized FCS Group, who had helped us do part of our, helped us do our rate analysis for our retail rates, and had them take a look at it to see if they saw anything unusual in the proposal. And they felt that it pretty much matched the settlement agreement, but they questioned the 9% rate of return that was included in that calculation. So as we discussed with FCS, we started doing some calculations, what if we came back with a proposal changing that 9%? Because as all of you know, you're not earning 9% really on anything right now. And so when I looked at this and looked at the history, when we started utilizing that 9% rate of return, prime rate was 9%, and prime is now 3.25. But we did feel like there should be some kind of an accommodation for risk, not in the sense that we are a risky customer, but more in the sense of with embedded infrastructure, you don't know what might happen. So to give them a little bit of cushion other than that return on equity of prime. So we proposed prime plus 1%, which is 4.25, and did a recalculation, and that came out to 89 cents per CCF. We submitted that counterproposal to South Fork, and as Mr. Moore said, they came back and said that they would be satisfied with that. So open for discussion here today, and then we'll bring it to the board tomorrow evening for formal approval of that, if everybody's satisfied.
Larry? We have excess water here for that area. How expensive would it be for us to build a pipeline to serve that area?
I'm turning back to the engineer for the cost of building a pipeline.
It's called Alignment B.
No, Alignment B does not get water from our water treatment plant to the other side of the river. Alignment B is from the NCCWC plant, which is already on the south side of the river, to the South Fork plant. So we still have that piece of pipe that we would need to get from our plant to the south side of the Clackamas River.
And I don't know, is there an, just a general per...
It would be very expensive. One big piece of that, of course, is getting across the river. How it's done today, either go over the top via a bridge crossing or unidirectional bore where you go underneath, which is very expensive.
Thanks. Oh, Pat, you got a question?
Yeah, two things. Right now, actually, physically, the infrastructure is in place between the three organizations, the Clackamas County Water Commission, South Fork Water Board, and Clackamas River Water. The commission has a pipeline that goes under the river. We funded Alignment B, as it's called, which is a connection between the commission plant and the South Fork plant. We paid, CRW paid a third of that. There is an agreement that was signed three ways back in, so I'm looking from memory, 2002, that called for a, if you will, a master water distribution firm and all that. That has, although it was signed, that has actually never been implemented. Pretty much the only use right now for Alignment B is between exchanging water between South Fork and the commission. So there is the physical infrastructure. I've always thought that we should be working, you know, at the board level to work out agreements so that either we wheel water, swap water, do whatever, so that we lower our costs. The other piece is, it is my understanding from reading the settlement agreement, that, well, my understanding says it in it, that the rate of return is 9%, and that is based on our, the only wholesale agreement we have, which is the Sunrise, which is a 9% rate of return. And I believe I'm correct in saying that in order to get a reduced rate from South Fork, which they've expressed their willingness to do for months now, that we would need to renegotiate our wholesale agreement with Sunrise. So I am not confident at this point, I can see the writing, that we could do anything as a board other than agree to it conceptually and then go through the process of renegotiating that Sunrise contract. So I think it's a little more complicated than it initially should appear.
Carol?
Just a couple of things to respond to Commissioner Holloway. She is absolutely correct that there is infrastructure that connects all three of the water treatment plants. The challenge that we have is that the North Clackamas County Water Commission operates 24/7, so they are moving water north through the pipeline all the time. So we don't have a window of opportunity to move our water to the south. And I don't have this in front of me either. I think it might be in packets for tomorrow. Rob Cummings, the water plant manager, did an analysis of how much it would cost to move our water if we could. So let's say NCCWC said, okay, we're going to give you two hours a day that you can move water your direction. If that could be worked out, we determined that the cost of moving water from our plant and pumping it to the heights for the pressure zones that we would need to, to get it to Pipeline B, that we would be over $1 per CCF. So economically, even though it could be physically possible, if they would allow us use of that pipe for a period of time, it's financially not a better alternative for us. With regard to the Sunrise Water and our 9% rate of return, we have not done a rate study for our wholesale customer, which happens to be Sunrise Water Authority, in a number of years. So we don't know that we're charging them appropriately for our assets that are used to provide water to them. And that is something that we want to be working on this year to come up with new numbers. We have done CPI adjustments to their rates every year, and obviously, in the past few years, that's been really minimal. So eight years ago, I think, it's been about eight years, when the Sunrise wholesale rate was calculated, a 9% rate of return was used. But I don't know if we, you know, added some assets or, you know, what those changes are. So I'm not sure that the 9% really factors in, and my understanding is South Fork is not asking to see any change in other agreements. And when we do a rate study for the Sunrise, then we will most likely not use that 9% because in this economic climate, it just makes no sense.
Do you have a question?
It seems to me that through the negotiation process for this, that a lot of these questions that we have now will be answered by, through an agreement. Kind of, we were talking about the same, same kind of outline with the BCT situation. Get us an agreement, something in writing that we can look at and study, and then go from there.
Which should be here for tomorrow. If they actually have negotiated an agreement, all we have to do is ratify it or not, as the case may be.
I'd sure like to get a piece of that 4% money.
Three and a half in my house, 30-year fixed. I was watching the rates. I don't, is there any other alternative that is not more expensive than this alternative, which is purchasing water from South Fork?
Not that I'm aware of. Something that certainly will be talked about later is we are putting a pipeline in place on the Carver Bridge that can serve a portion of our customers on the south. So that could reduce the consumption in the next five years, five years from now.
Six years.
Yeah, could reduce the amount of consumption on the south side.
Which would reduce our cost there.
We're hanging a line on the Carver Bridge. How large is it?
18.
18. Commissioner Holloway, just let me clarify that while we're on this subject. And what we have proposed with ODOT is that space be reserved on the bridge. I don't think this board has ever approved the construction dollars for that pipeline yet. But we've been cooperating with ODOT to make sure from an engineering standpoint, there is room for an 18-inch line on that bridge.
Will there be any pump station required?
Not to get to the south side, but to serve the majority of those homes in the, I believe it's the Redland Pressure Zone, yes. it's the Redland Pressure Zone, yes, you'd have to be, there would be some pumping.
How much?
One main pump station is proposed. So, I'm not positive on the exact capacity.
Okay. Please provide that information.
Relative to the Carver Bridge project, it is a multi-year project. Each year, we've allocated money in the budget to cover the portion that we can accomplish in that year. Some of it depends upon Clackamas County timing. We had about a year's delay, I think, because they delayed what, you know, Carver Bridge. So, but it gets, it's very much a project that is moving forward. The second thing is, Carol alluded to what we're going to be discussing, which is, I hope, the cost of service study. Right now, we really don't know what it costs us to produce water. And the board funded for this year, a cost of service study, which we have not yet begun. And so, that's going to be a, that will play a part ultimately in, you know, in all of this.
Did you have a response, Mr. Moore?
Yes. Any alternative to our present method of purchasing water from South Fork is at least five to six years. One of the things that we're trying to do with some of these things, with the Carver Bridge and so forth, and quite frankly, it lends itself quite well to a strategic discussion by the board and staff as to how we want to proceed, because it is, I think, one of the things that has helped us move this discussion forward, not only with South Fork, but with some of the other users as well. The, the other thing that we know, kind of work backwards in the discussion that we've had, is that the NCCWC plant is operating at peak. And so, for them, for us to get water there, they would have to essentially shut down their operations to allow our water to get through, which would mean that they would have a difficult time servicing their customers.
So, that's not going to happen?
That's not going to happen. So, so what we did several months ago is that we had an executive session at the board where we discussed these alternatives, along with FCS. They were here. We talked about what it would cost us theoretically if we could get our water to the south side. The board also met, it was part of the discussion, when we talked about alignment B, and the board was also part of the discussion when we started talking about the actual South So, where we are, and also the cost of service study, is underway. We have entered into an agreement, and we, that's one of the things that we have, that we wanted to talk about tonight, to respond to that, because I agree with Commissioner Holloway. That was a priority placed on staff by the board to move forward with that study, so that we can have some of these issues put to bed in time for our budget and any future rate discussion. So, I think that these are things, I think the board's correct, that these things have been talked about. And obviously, they will be talked about again as we bring them forward. But I think that we've pretty much vetted the, the South Fork issue.
Some business people are continuing to push for industrial development on the south side of the river. Basically, east of the Carver Bridge is the eighteen-inch pipeline, kind of big enough to serve that area, if it develops.
Yes, I can respond. Yes, the answer is yes. The eighteen-inch line is, in and of itself, is more than enough capacity-wise, and actually, off of the bridge, it will be reduced into a twelve-inch size. But the main point was that we construct an eighteen-inch line across the bridge for future needs. So, there's always that capacity to free.
Well, if I understand the numbers correctly, we could have ended up paying almost $180,000 for this contract, and because it was negotiated in good faith, we're actually only looking at about $88,000 increase, which is thirty-eight over what was originally budgeted for the increase. And which, that, that thirty-eight we would get either from yearly savings or from the contingency fund. Am I correct?
Right. If, this is something that we would watch very closely as we start watching our consumption, and should we be getting too close to that budget, we would bring a supplemental budget back to the board, authorizing transfer of funds from contingency. At the time that we were preparing the budget, we did not know what this rate was going to be.
Well, we'll say, thank you for saving $90,000.
That's if the board approves.
Yeah, I understand. Ninety, ninety K is ninety K, so. Is there any other questions or discussion on this issue today?
I would just like to see any communications that have come from South Fork or the representatives relative to this.
We didn't see any communications. Could you clarify please?
If, if they've sent, given us anything in writing, I think the board should see that.
At the time we talked about the agreement?
No, anything that we have so far today.
Well, if I understand, our, our agenda tomorrow includes approval of the contract, am I not correct?
Well, no, it's approval of the rate agreement.
Of the rate agreement, yeah.
And then, we would go back and, actually, there's, the settlement agreement speaks for itself, and the methodology for arriving at the rates. So, it's just a letter that we would be sending back to South Fork, once the board approves.
Okay. So, it's not a whole bunch of renegotiating contracts?
So, it's not a full track, I don't think, basically.
Next, next item for discussion is item number three of the Oboli case.
I'll make sure to, make sure to go somewhere.
The board, I, I did provide the board a short synopsis, relatively short synopsis of the Oboli case, which actually has two facets. One is the notice of a tort claim that has been filed on behalf of a CRW employee. That tort claim notice is not a claim, it's not treated as a claim yet. It is simply the possibility of a claim, but it is required under the tort claim statute. The second component of the tort claim notice and filing is that a complaint has actually been filed by the same employee with the Oregon Bureau of Labor and Industry. And that complaint was essentially based upon the activities, the alleged activities of two commissioners, Commissioners Holloway and Sterling. Because of the notice of the tort claim, we did send that notice for information, as we're required to do under the insurance policy, to SDAO Insurance Trust, who has our insurance at this point in time. So, they are aware of that potential. No lawsuit has been filed on that claim, and Oboli is in the process of investigating that claim. After the claim was filed with Oboli, both Commissioner Holloway and Commissioner Sterling made a request in an open meeting for the board to provide counsel to them. And that is typically required of any officer, employee, or agent of CRW who gets a claim filed against them, provided that they're operating in the course and scope of their employment. The prior board authorized engagement of counsel to investigate that issue, to determine whether the alleged activities were performed in the spoken course of their duties as commissioners. That report was performed by Ms. Tamsin Leachman of the law firm of Fisher &amp; Phillips, and the Phillips is no relation to me that I know of. They're based in Atlanta, Georgia, they have a Portland office. And she concluded that investigation, filed the report with the board. I believe all of the board members have a copy of that report. And the, as a result of that report, the prior board considered, but did not come to any conclusion on the request for appointment of legal counsel for either or both of the commissioners. And that is, that request is still pending before this board. The, the board can rely upon the report. The board could commission a new report, obviously at additional costs. And/or, the board can rely upon its own determination as to whether or not it wants to provide legal counsel for one or both of the commissioners. Just a couple of other detailed points, I think, under the Tort Claims Act, it is up to, if the board decides to appoint counsel, it is up to the board to engage that counsel. The commissioners do not get to select their counsel, it's up to the board to appoint counsel. And I think the language in the statute is to engage that counsel for that representation. So, there are some practical issues that we may even deal with if the board does decide to appoint counsel, and that is, how do we monitor the legal cost? How do we divide the legal cost between what is applicable to CRW and their activities of CRW versus the individual actions? Because the employee has also named them individually, in addition to the action of naming CSW. So, that is the issue that is before the board, and of course, this meeting is just to present the information, and at some point in time, if the board wants to consider that and take action upon that request, then it would need to put that on the agenda. And I, and I believe that Commissioner Holloway requested that that go back on the agenda on behalf of Commissioner Sterling.
So, reading through that, there was a couple of references in there about their request was not in writing. Is that a necessary part of what happens?
In, in, the, the statute does require that their request be in writing, however, they did make it in open session.
Excuse me, which, which request needs to be in writing?
The request for appointment of counsel.
Okay.
From the agency.
So, I'm, I'm trying to clarify, is it in writing to place it on our agenda? Or just place it on our agenda, and then it would be in writing after that?
No, the statute simply says that for them to request counsel, they need to do it in writing.
Okay.
And then, we would go through the normal process of putting that on the agenda. But, that is a technicality that I certainly would recommend that the board waive. They made their request in an open meeting, and that, for all purposes, I think, we certainly have actual knowledge of the request, so I'm not one to, you know, to force them to go back and then put it in writing.
Mr. President?
I direct the board at this time to review page twenty. This is dated August sixth, 2012, by the report by Tamsil L. Leachman. Reading from her synopsis and conclusion. Because of the limited nature of the conduct at issue regarding to Commissioner Sterling, and given the context in which it occurred...
I'm listening, I'm just looking for it myself.
That's fine. Simply refer to page twenty. It states very specifically, Ms. Leachman recommends the Commissioner Sterling be provided with facts.
Just, just for clarification, Mr. Chairman and the board, I did make reference to the fact that I believe each in their individual capacity does have a conflict of interest, an actual conflict of interest, so that my recommendation is they not participate in the discussion or vote on their particular matter. What Mr. Sterling has done is not such an actual conflict, though he is just simply referring and renewing the request for appointment of counsel, and I believe he can do that without violating the conflict of interest. But, I do still maintain that each of them have an actual conflict of interest that would prohibit participating in the discussion or the vote with respect to their individual appointment.
And that is your opinion?
It is.
It's, it's pretty clear what they say, that it isn't absolutely clear one way or the other, and leaves it pretty much just at the discretion of the board to make that decision. So, are you requesting that it be calendared at a subsequent meeting, and if so, which meeting?
My understanding that it would be on tomorrow's meeting.
Is that informational or action?
That would be an action item.
I request that it be brought forward for tomorrow's action items in the regular meeting of CRW.
It's not currently on the agenda that I have.
My name.
It's up to the chair, which, you're the president of the board, do you wish to have it placed on the agenda for tomorrow? Would you see that that occurs, please, Mr. Moore?
Sure.
Thank you. Yes?
I would make the same request on my behalf. As you are all aware, I have significant disagreements with Ms. Leachman's...
I didn't get the last part you said.
I, I said, I have, I have disagreements with Ms. Leachman's report. Also, I believe you're all aware of the October thirteenth, 2011 meeting, where that whole complaint was planned.
What, I didn't, was what? Plan, I think, is that what you said?
That's correct.
It's not relevant to the discussion. Either, either we agree to provide counsel, or we do not agree to provide counsel, and it's essentially...
Exactly, and I would simply request it be placed on the agenda. Thank you very much.
And then, I'll speak, speaking for myself, and I understand there might be disagreement on your part with our attorney, but again, he's the board's attorney, so speaking for myself as a commissioner, I would follow the advice of our attorney. I think when one has one and doesn't use it, that's an unwise decision. But it will be agendized. Is there any further discussion on the Oboli case? Hearing that, the discussion of the FCS rate study, and I believe Mr. Moore has some update for us on that.
Yes. As you've heard earlier, one of the leech pins to our rates is that when this issue came up during the rate, the prime board had appointed a rate committee, and that rate committee, along with the budget committee, had recommended that the board place high priority on conducting a rate study, and do that post haste. And I believe that they were talking about in the fall of the year, which is now as we speak, or as soon as possible, I think, was the more operative word. We had presented to the board a recommendation that we use FCS, because essentially, we had used them initially in doing the, correct me, Carol, if I'm wrong, the revenue portion...
Revenue requirements.
And revenue requirements, when we were in the rate study portion of this. And rather than bring... And rather than bringing in another consultant that had to go through a new learning curve, that we essentially negotiate with FCS to continue their work. We were advised that the rate study would really have four parts. The first was the revenue piece. The second is cost of services. And what was the third one?
Benchmarking.
Benchmarking, so that we know how our rates compared with other like entities in each of the category areas.
Would you like me to fill in a little bit more on that for the new guys that maybe haven't heard a lot of this?
As soon as he's done, yes. Tend to be a bit linear here, so if you don't mind.
And then, the fourth part of that was the enhanced rate portion of it to really kind of get into a lot of the hydraulic modeling, which might affect rates, and the other technical aspects of the rates. So if you add all four of those together, you would have a pretty robust rate study. We had presented the contract with FCS to the prior board, and it was deadlocked, essentially two to two. That, we not moved forward on that, as I recall. And because of the importance of this study, and then we also had the issue of commissioners resigning and the like, that what I did is, under my signature authority, move forward on to conduct as much of the rate study as we could. Within that context, with the idea that if there are additional monies needed for the level four part of the rate study, I could bring it back to what is now the current board and ask for authorization to, to move forward. So we have done that. We have a contract with FCS. They are moving forward with their, their study. I think they're about a third of the way through. And we had anticipated bringing this issue back once the new board had got its feet planted. But because it was raised, we thought we'd bring it for today's meeting.
I just wanted to give a little bit more background on what they do for system benchmarking. They, what they will do is they try to find similar entities. And we're somewhat of a challenge, because we do water only, but we have a water treatment plant. So they will look for other entities in the region that are similar to us. They will look at various metrics to determine dollars that we spend based on, you know, miles of pipe, number of customers, number of employees, all of those kinds of things, and compare us to other entities. So they can see where we're doing well and where we need improvement. So the benchmarking is really kind of the piece that they need in front of that revenue requirements, because we need to know if, if we're spending money appropriately, if we're putting the appropriate resources to the appropriate actions. Then the cost of service study goes to the data collection. And what they'll be doing in this part is looking at the cost of water and then how those costs are distributed amongst the different customer classes. Right now, we have single-family residential as one customer class with a specific rate structure. And then we have our commercial and industrial, as well as multifamily in another, and then we have fire service. So what they may do as they go through this is determine that maybe we need three rate structures, a different rate structure for multifamily than we currently have, or something like that. But that'll all be based on the cost of providing those services to that customer class. And then, as Mr. Moore was talking about, the revenue requirements, they've got the data that they used before, but that can be enhanced particularly in light of what they determined in the benchmarking.
Okay. Any other comments from staff?
Two questions. Is this the same group that has an advisory committee that met about a year ago or so?
No, it was the group that met in the spring.
Pardon?
It's the group that met in the spring.
Okay, yeah, that's what I mean, yeah.
Same group. Same principle.
I got, I got input from a lot of people that that group was pretty much a bogus group. So.
The rate committee?
Pardon?
The rate committee or FCS group?
The rate committee. The other question is.
Commissioner Sol, hold that thought, because I'm not sure we're communicating here. The, the rate committee is something different than this FCS group?
Right, right. I understand.
Your second question.
Second question is, the deadlock on the board was only on the fourth part of the rate study or the old rate study?
I believe that there was a discussion at the board about the RFP and the methodology that the RFP was going to take in order to hire the rate consultants. And that's where the board deadlocked.
And then you went ahead and hired the group. And you believe that only the board would have input on the fourth part?
Well, no, I think the board will have input on all parts. One of the things that is in segment, the last tier of work, is a discussion, once we, once we've had a discussion with the board on how you would like for this information to be communicated with you and how you would like for the process to proceed. That would determine what additional costs would be required. And I think thus far, they've given us a gestimate of about $7,000 approximately. That would, additional, which would take that beyond what we had already contracted with them to do. But we did have discussions about the board needed to be involved in that process.
This is the third question. Do you plan on having another advisory committee in this process?
Well, the reason I smell that, I didn't plan on the first one. That was really directed. That was directed by the board. And so if the board so directs, we could do that.
Unless the board tell you you won't have one?
It's not my plan. It's not my call.
Okay.
Uh, yeah. I have minutes of that meeting. And the, one of the concerns that led to this split on the board was whether the general manager would go out and negotiate and sign what was presented to us as I would tell someone in a contract. At the moment, the general manager has a $50,000 contract, uh, contracting limit. And I said, at the moment, you have a $50,000 contract, contracting limit. And the general manager is supposed to forward copies of all contracts to the board. So I'm frankly, somewhat taken aback that a contract has been entered into that we don't know about. Because the whole issue was that the board wanted to have the information that went into this process and not be shut out. For example, when we did the rate study, which was really a revenue study and didn't look at expense, which the cost of service certainly should do. The board was not able to get the information that actually went to the consultants. And when the consultants did the self-report board study, the board was refused the FCS report on that. So with that background, the board wanted to be quite certain that we received all the information related to this cost of service study, because it's key in almost everything that we're doing going forward. And so I, my first question is, what size contract did you enter into? Would you please have it for us tomorrow?
I have it for you tonight.
Okay, fine. And, and, you know, so what, what's the amount?
Forty-five thousand dollars.
So if I understand correctly, then you entered into a, a partial contract to begin the study process based on your judgment that it, that it had been direction to do a study and that it needed, in fact, to be done, because as Pat points out, we need that data going forward in terms of our further rate increases or anything else that we might decide to do.
That's correct.
And it was under the amount of money that you are allowed to spend on your own initiative. The remaining portion, I would assume that because you're bringing that back to us, would be in excess of $50,000. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so, and that would be the fourth segment of the study?
Well.
Or which segments would it be? Let me put it that way.
It would be the fourth tier to the study. And that's the segment that I was responding to Commissioner Sol on, which is how much interaction does the board want to have with the consultant? Because that will determine how much that tier is going to cost. And the extent of the involvement of the board with that. Because at that point, you would be talking about the collection of the data and those kind of things. And to me, it's really a policy discussion around how you want to allocate those dollars within the rate structure before it is actually accepted and implemented. So I had anticipated, because had we waited until now and started our RFP development, we would be into the first of next year before we actually would start the work, which could, which would put us beyond the March date when we began, when we began our budget development. And the board would not have the information that it needed to have those discussions. And because of the criticality that both the rate committee and the board had placed upon it and said, get this thing started, that's why I made the judgment I made.
Pat?
No.
So you want a copy of the contract that has been signed up to this point?
And, and the concern that led to the deadlock in the beginning is that we wanted to be certain that we knew exactly what was going to be done and what data was going to be put into it.
So you would like to know what the scope of work is?
Uh, yeah, the scope of work that was presented to us was a paragraph. And that, to me, didn't go anywhere near far enough. So, my, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
So my concern is, since apparently three of the four parts have been completed, without any input or oversight from the board, I don't know if we're going to come out with anything better than what we came out with in the revenue study, which was highly problematic.
So may I, may I respond?
Sure.
The four levels that the study was going to take on was presented during the rate study. And it was presented during the board's consideration when the FCS experts, consultants had came and presented this to the board. We have not changed that at all. Matter of fact, I believe the prior chair had reported out on a discussion that she had had with the principal of FCS about the different levels that were needed in a rate study. So that's one. Two, I did not respond just now that levels two and three were completed. I said they were underway and that we were about a third done. They're not completed at all. So at any time that, and the board wants to bring those consultants in, that's why we have to talk about what level of involvement does the board want? How many meetings are required so that we can bring those in? But I'm sure we can bring the consultants in even before we have that discussion. And you can ask and advise as to what else you would like to have them consider.
When would it need to be calendared for them to come in? Give us a preliminary, let me back up. We've got several things here right now. Obviously, Pat wants more information about the scope of the study other than a single paragraph. Obviously, you're looking forward to completing this study and you're going to need an okay on, on a subsequent final contract with amounts that are in excess of $50,000.
I would add, excuse me, Commissioner. I would add that it may be appropriate, given the confusion here, to have those consultants come in as soon as we can get them here, have a discussion with the board prior to anything else happening so that the board is satisfied that the information that they believe is needed or that the rate consultants believe is needed, has been covered. To me, that's a reasonable alternative to doing what we're talking about.
Is that something that could be presented by them to us on the 20th?
I will make every effort to, to call them and find out when, when they could do it.
Because I know we're building up an agenda for tomorrow, and then the next meeting is going to be the 20th, so maybe we should.
Well, and I think that you, I think we all realize that we're all running to catch the train, because there's a lot of things that have been built up. And so, I think this is all business that is immediate. And so I think that we would make every effort to try to get them here on the 20th. If not, then we would find the next closest timeframe. Or we can always schedule another special meeting to have them come in and just talk about it.
I don't know that I need even to talk to them. I need to see the contract you have with them and to make sure that they're proceeding, they're told to proceed in a certain manner. I think that doesn't satisfy me at this point.
If, do you want to leave it at that? Or do, do you want to have them come in and at least give us a presentation at a subsequent meeting?
I would prefer to be able to review the contract and whatever material has been provided to them ahead of time. And then, then I could decide whether I feel that I need to speak with them or not. So that they have the information to review.
Is it feasible for you to provide some of that basic information? And then we'll, we'll delay whether or not we put it on, on, is the scope there?
The scope of work is included in the contract.
Okay.
The amount of the contract and the date that the contract was entered into is all in the stock.
Would you see to it that all board members get a copy of that? And then sometime, a couple of weeks before the meeting, the 20th, we can have an answer as to whether or not you want it on the agenda? We'll determine at that point and draft and ask that question? Yes, sir.
I may just mention, I, I would like to have not only the contract, but the material that has been provided to the consultants. That will tell me what it is that they're actually doing.
Question, what's the, what's the point?
The point is to get a good understanding of what is actually going on. It's, it's been.
Isn't the scope of work in the contract, aren't they the end result of their discussions and their work?
Can I, if I may respond?
Sure.
The outcome depends upon, it's like sausage. Depends on what goes in at one end, see what you got on the other. And I would like to know what went into making the particular sausage.
Sausage isn't the only thing that has a dire outcome, either.
Well, looking for a simple analogy, but, or I could say garbage in, garbage out. I want to be sure that we're putting sustainably locally grown, organic material in.
Mr. Sterling.
Dr. Sol took the words out of my mouth, and then Commissioner Holloway did the same thing. the same thing. In order for this board to make rational judgments that benefit the CRW rate payer, the work product must be presented to the board so that they can see firsthand in black and white what has occurred, what methodology has actually been applied, the methodology. So it's got to be produced.
Okay. In general, I'd hope that anybody on this board is a consultant in water managers, rate studies. I certainly not. I've been around the business for a long time and I would not take on that function myself. So if anybody else on this board can do that sort of thing, why are we hiring a consultant?
I tend to agree with you, frankly. I'm not an attorney, which is why I listen to an attorney say I'm not the chief financial officer, which is why I pay attention to what she says. And I'm not an auditor, which is why I read what they say when they, when we spend $40,000 to have ourselves audited every single year. You know, my, my view on something like that is that if the information we get is, is inaccurate or false or we are lied to, we have an issue. But if the information that we get is accurate, and that's been proven from everything I've seen up to this point, what we've been given by our CFO, what we've been given by our general manager, but what we have been given by our attorney has turned out to be accurate and has stood the test of the court, it stood the test of the FBI, it stood the test of, I don't know how many judges.
County sheriff.
County sheriff and the district attorney's office. I think I would defer to their expertise, quite frankly. I think, and I'm not sure that the, that the scope of the study that we're talking about here includes providing all of the volumes of potential work that they may have done. Five copies to all of us. I agree with Mr. Sola that I would like to see the contract and what the scope of work is.
If I may, and maybe this will help clear up the place. On page 13 of the contract that I just passed out to you is the scope of services. And I believe that it's pretty clear on what it is that they're going to do. The first part is, you heard from Ms. Bright, there's a technical analysis and that includes systems benchmarking. And then it goes into the detail that they're going to use to perform that work and that they're referencing the American Waterways Association, which is the standards group for water entities. They're going to be using their methodology for doing this work. The, and because that is so specialized, they are subcontracting that work with the MSA group. And, and we just got a draft of that today. The second part of this is the technical analysis, which is the cost of service study framework. And it goes through and it talks about what that is. It talks about the data collection that they're going to be doing in order to arrive at the cost of services. Then they're going to go into a subset of that, which is the cost of services retail. And they are, they've identified what the methodology is under CASA. Then they're talking about customer class analysis, revenue requirements, base capacity, peak capacity, customer accounts and meter and services, fire protection and others. And then the allocation of functional cost pools. Then they're going to go through the cost of services wholesale. And they will be going through the methodology that you see there, which is on page 14. And then at the end there, you see, which I think responds to Commissioner Sola's issue, there's the, on page 15 where they're talking about review meetings. And what they've said here is that under this cost analysis, you can see the total budget is $46,210. They've allocated two onsite meetings in the budget to review the results with staff. Obviously, we would expand that to include the board if that's what the board wishes. And attendance at a meeting with no presentation development, which is the $2,600, and attendance at a meeting requiring the development of a presentation, which is $3,200 plus their travel expenses. So that would be over and above the $4,600. And so this is what they're proposing to do. This is their scope of services. And even as a staff person, we will be reliant upon their expertise. That's what we're paying for this to do the work as stated.
Thank you. Pat?
As you were not here during the revenue study, we had responses both from Eric Ford, who handles utility services for Precision Cast Parts nationwide, and from Terry Emmerich of Emmerich International, expecting to meet with us, that the data that was presented for that study was inadequate to its purpose. And if you look at page 13, their data collection, the possible data used during the initial rate study, the possible data used during the initial rate study update will be used. So I'm not comfortable. I have the highest regard for both Eric and Terry as financial acumen. And Eric presented us with some charts that were pretty shocking. And so I, the only language I've heard used tonight deals with pretty much revenue. Expense is just as much an issue. But the bottom line is that we need to know what it's really cost us to produce water. And we need to be able to look at that and find out if we can be more efficient and economical in so doing. And so by, and by the way, I used to direct actuarial studies for insurance companies, so I have some financial background. And I wasn't an actuary, but I understood the process. And so I am, will be much more comfortable knowing the information that was given, that was used in the, and then relate that to the output of the consultants. I think based on the executive session meeting we had, that FCS is highly competent. But again, they can only deal with what they got, with what they were given. And that's my concern. It's been my concern all along.
Well, then based upon, excuse me, it seems to me that maybe what could happen is Commissioner Holloway can give us one additional data she thinks they ought to look at and we can ensure that they will get it.
Since I don't know what they got, that would be an impossibility.
Carol, you have a comment?
I did want to point out that in the scope of services, the technical analysis, the benchmarking will do just that. It will compare our costs to other similar entities. And so that will, it will help to determine if we have operational efficiency, if we're spending too much in the area or if we need to address more. And frankly, a rate study is less about financial knowledge, it's more about how the system works. That's how we determine the cost. My experience in previous lives have been that it has been more public works or engineering driven, and that's where a lot of their data is going to come from. They do operate their, they do their analysis based on budget because that is what they have, but they will go back and cross-reference to see what budgets to actuals were in the past. And I have one more thing and it, it slipped my mind. The other, the information that I've given them to date, which is basically consumption by account number for, over like a three-year period. So they have, you know, specific consumption by bill, by meter size for every customer in our database. That's a huge amount of data that they can put into their system and analyze because they're rate analysts.
So it sounds like, it sounds like the issues that have been raised are actually going to get addressed as part of the study as, as we speak. So again, I'm, I'm primarily concerned with the outcome. Because I'm sure what that's going to give us is a, is a foundation for what capital planning we can do in the future, what rates we may or may, what rates we may have to raise and reasons why we may have to do so. So I'm pretty well satisfied with it. Pat, you have a remaining question?
If I may, yeah. Consumption is certainly a part of the analysis, but unless I have completely misunderstood the scope of work that the board was looking for initially, I haven't heard anything about cost, operational cost in this. And I am quite prepared to trust industry information coming from FCS, the professionals, believing they're competent. My concern is the information that CRW is providing to them and the extent of it. And so that's, that's what I'm asking.
I guess the question I would ask is, I, they have access to virtually any information they need to do the study, is that not correct?
That's correct.
So any, virtually all of that information regarding who's paying how much, what it costs to produce water at this location or pump it to that location through these pipes, they get everything that they need to do this study. And there's nothing without.
Right. So the, we, it seems to me that we could play point, counterpoint here on that.
Yeah.
It seems to me that if the board wants to pay FCS to come down to answer the specific questions, then I will ask them to do it.
Well, do you want to have them come down and answer specific questions?
I just have this. There'll be an end result, which is what we're looking for. They know more about it than I do. I'm not going to go out there and, it's a pain in the neck I've been through though.
I feel the same way that you do.
We hire them. That's what they're here for.
That's it, the board? Until I go through this contract, I guess I don't know whether I need more or not. And Pat, you would like more? And I'm assuming Mr. Sterling would, okay?
It's essential in order to take and determine the true cost.
Then I'll, I will defer to your judgment after you've gone through that. And then if you ask, ask for it to be done by the general manager, Heather Brereton?
I don't know how long it would take, Commissioner Sola, but it may be that tomorrow night you could let us know, you know, if.
And you can't...
I'm sorry. It may be that if you can review it by tomorrow night, you could let us know, you know, that it...
Okay. Well, we seem to have covered...
Yes. One caveat. In all of our contracts that you will be getting from the board, the, the first phase of the contract, everything through to the scope of services, will typically be benoît, okay? And will only be distinguished by the type of contract it is. Several years ago, one of the things that staff did is ask Mr. Phillips to provide us with boilerplates for our contracts so that there is consistency and uniformity in the contracts. So if there's ever a dispute that the right for contract interpretation resides with CRW, not with the vendor. So probably you will get tired of reading these boilerplates, but they will always be provided. And at the end, was problem...
Just getting comfortable, Mike.
And so if really the scope is there, there may be some changes within the boilerplate, if there are, we'll let you know. Then what happens is that when we've put together the board packet, although it won't happen tomorrow night because of the quick turnaround, you will get a list of all the current, all the contracts that we have implemented, whether they're within my signature authority or not, that will be included in the packet so you can review those and see the paper.
Before we adjourn, would you convey to Bob George my compliments and appreciation for his present, presentation of this Oregon Department of Transportation contract? And I am particularly pleased with the three-page and a half synopsis in the front with the options as well as draft motions. I think that's an excellent format. We can dig in as much as we want to dig in, but it really helps summarize things and keep things focused on the, on the salient details. So please convey to him my appreciation for that approach. I thought it was excellent. Is there any other comments from the board? Mr. Sola?
On, on that presentation, we're paying ODOT several hundred thousand for what they call an end, I believe, end project or something. Who makes the decision about whether ODOT pays or we pay?
It's kind of a two-tiered question, Dean. You might want to take it because they're for the state anyway, for state work. And I believe, let me just make sure I get this right, that if it's in a, if it is a road that will be what, an interstate part of the highway system, they reimburse us. Is that correct?
Essentially, that is correct. It is, it is a dual effort and this one is a little bit more complicated than the usual situation because both ODOT and CRW have hired the same designer to design the relocation for that Sunrise Corridor project. That's OBEC. So it's a combined ODOT, CRW and OBEC staff that goes through the work section by section and identifies what costs are allocated to which party. So it's, it's been a combined effort and Adam may be able to address it more specifically.
I think you touched on the nature of the project. I know Mr. George is going to give a quite detailed discussion tomorrow about the easements. I think Mr. Phillips can cover that too precisely.
So we'll get a, we'll get a complete answer tomorrow.
Yeah, but there's a criteria that says we have to replace this water line because they're building a highway, but we have to pay for it.
That's correct. If it is, essentially what it is, is that on those sites that are owned by CRW, CRW has to pay for those sites. Or if we have an easement, a water line and an easement that's under our control, we pay for the, the either relocation or an upgrade. And I'm not sure actually if there's any upgrade on any of those sites or not. Essentially, it's for the relocation.
Yeah, there's some items.
But part of that is that we say we're not going to need to update the area unless they put the highway through, then we have to pay for it.
Correct, correct. It's, it's the highway that causes the relocation in those areas. And then I think there was some engineering decision along the way as to whether to do some repair and upgrade in the areas that are getting disturbed that may be included in the cost. But, but Mr. George will be the one who is best to answer that.
There's no other business? We stand adjourned? Thank you.